Good evening, everyone. We're a little bit early, but I don't think anybody would have any objection to us starting now. It is now seven, going on 7:30. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Carl, could you call the roll?
John.
John, John is here?
Louis, here. Marat.
Yep.
Marcio. Cristo.
Okay, here?
Yeah.
We have.
We have a forum. So, let's begin with the approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the October 24th. I'm sorry. Dan, these are the wrong minutes. October needed October minutes. October 24th minutes.
Yeah, the September needed to here.
But anyway, anyone, everyone received them already, so can we approve the October 24th?
No, can I question that?
Yeah, Dan, we need the real minutes, not these.
I'm getting them.
Can I question that? You had mentioned something about the tree cutting as sixty-one thousand or something to that effect.
Let's, okay.
Let me finish, please. And then when you spoke to me, you said that Dan, after the meeting, found a double invoice. So that the invoice was thirty thousand dollars.
It was a miscalculation.
Miscalculation.
Based on the fact that there was one invoice that was counted twice. Because my recollection was that we had approved it before, but it was never paid. And it appeared again on the last agenda, and it was not paid.
So how much is actual tree cutting?
Thirty-one was spent.
How much, how much is the tree cutting? You know, how much is the whole figure?
Dan can probably answer that. Is thirty-one inclusive of the tree trimming as well as the cleanup?
No.
The cleanup was thirty-one, and we have not paid the pre-trimming debt because they have not completed it.
And how much was that?
That was fourteen.
Fourteen, but they did not complete the cutting of the trees?
That's right. They're coming back to complete the cutting of the trees. They have not been paid.
Oh, but is that still part of the thirty-one thousand?
No, it's a different number.
What number is it?
Fourteen.
Fourteen thousand.
Yes.
Fourteen thousand is for?
For the tree trimming. Yes. And that, that I'm going to get adjusted because they're not trimming as many trees since we had trees to come down. So they have to change that number.
Okay, and the thirty-one thousand was for cleanup?
That was for cleanup, yes.
And we paid them by the hourly on that?
That, that's true. We paid them by the rate that they gave us for twenty fifteen. But originally, they made the mistake and gave me, they gave me the wrong numbers on the first invoice. And we corrected that. And that brought it down. They were charged, they were originally charged, they're supposed to charge us three dollars and fifty cents an hour for the cleanup. They were charging us almost four dollars. And with the number of hours that they, they took to clean up, the number, the price went way up. When I discovered that they were charging us the wrong numbers, then I spoke to them and that brought it back down.
Was that per hour, per man?
Yes.
And that number, is that what they're using?
Depends on, at the, because time, it could be anywhere from four to nine men.
Okay, we, we need to move on, because we have quite a long agenda. Sarah, I'll just take your, and that's it, because we have people presenting.
From hearing this discussion, obviously, we have to have checkpoints, you know?
Right.
Maybe more reliable people checking.
We, we can get into that more during the manager's report, because we have, we have a very important presentation. Right, okay. So I'm going, while, while we're waiting for the minutes, I'm going to ask Alan. Actually, let me, let me, before I, I call on you, just do the president's message to get that out of the way. So first of all, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. As a community, we do have a lot to be thankful for this year. Of course, at the top of the list is surviving Hurricane Irma. As we all know, if Irma had maintained its original course, the damage to our community would have been devastating. So we should all be very grateful that that didn't happen. We can also be thankful for continued progress on our building renovations, a new elevator maintenance company, and the fourth year in a row of no maintenance fee increase. That is, if you all return your proxies in time. For those of you who haven't already sent in your budget proxy, which also includes the bylaws amendment proposal, please do so at this time. You have some copies here for those who have not completed it yet. If we don't get it back by December 5th, we will not be able to keep maintenance at the rate it is now. It would have to go up to fully funded reserves, which actually this year, according to the calculation that was made, would be a fifty percent maintenance increase, which I'm sure nobody wants. So please do, if you have not already done so, complete your proxy. We do have some extra copies up here. Just come of any time, and we will provide it. As I said, we do have a very busy agenda tonight. We have a presentation by our insurance agent for the insurance, property insurance renewal. We have presenters from a couple of hurricane impact window companies. And we have a presentation, I believe, by, is it a pest control company or a couple, is that, is that still on the agenda? Okay. All right, so thank you again, and have a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Alan.
Hello, everybody. Hello.
Hello.
Hello, everybody. My name's Alan Adams with John Golf Insurance. We've been your agent since 2012. And obviously, as John said, survived the hurricane, survived a bullet, if you will, because it could have been a whole lot worse. Most of our communities kind of made out just like International Village, a lot of debris, some trees, some fences, but no real hardcore roofs missing or equipment missing off roofs. Or a lot of water intrusion, mostly just small water intrusion. So again, like John said, we are very lucky. We are renewing your insurance this year. We're doing it a little bit early for a few reasons, opportunity and refunds. And we're going to take your insurance, what we call extended term. Twenty eighteen, we've all, already been notified by all carriers, all of our brokers, that there will be an increase. So our only option, not our only option, but the best option was to buy your insurance like, like sometimes you'll see travel companies, airplane, they'll buy their fuel for two years in advance and get a cheaper rate. And that's what we're doing now. We're actually saving money by going six more months into 2019. And we're going to save about thirty-six thousand dollars overall doing it. And we're going to get a refund from your current carrier. Because we don't really renew till next month, in the middle of next month. We're going to do it early and get a complete refund from your current carrier. So we're going to take your deductible from five percent down to three. What's that mean? Every building is insured for roughly, roughly nine million dollars. If it were to, if the building were to be removed today, any one of your eleven structures out here is worth roughly nine million each. The hurricane deductible is five percent of that nine million, four hundred and fifty thousand. We're reducing it to three, which is the lowest. You can buy it down to two, but it's terribly expensive. I don't think anyone would even want to hear it. So three percent, we're down to, instead of four fifty, the hurricane deductible, we're going to two ninety. So it's not going to do much for us on this hurricane, because you didn't, you couldn't even come close to meeting a deductible. But perhaps if the hurricane were worse, your insurance would have been there for you. So we're saving about thirty-six thousand. We're going long-term for eighteen months, and we're reducing the hurricane deductible. It's a win-win for International, if you ask me. And we're, we're happy to be able to deliver it. So unless you have any questions, John, or anybody on the board?
Let's do four questions first. Anybody on board have a question? Marat?
Have we got those reimbursements? From, from, right here?
Talk louder, please.
We don't get reimbursements until we actually cancel. We can't cancel until you guys approve.
So, yeah, technically, we have to approve it at a board meeting, but you've been in communication with the company, and we've indicated to you already that we are, we are going to approve this tonight. So they had, have they locked it in for us?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we both get that full refund. Backdated to what?
Eleven-one.
Great.
And we just, no loss letter has to be signed, and obviously.
So essentially, the last twenty-one days, they've backdated it for us to, for twenty days, to November 1st. So we get a refund for that full time, even though we are only technically approving it today. We had indicated ahead of time that.
Yeah, we told the carriers at the date, and we had to wait for the board to say yes or no.
So now, now to the.
So you're getting a credit for November and December?
We're getting a credit from November 1 to December 4. That's when your new policy expires.
So it's actually one month?
It's a month and a couple of days.
So it's accrued, how, how much, approximately, how much is it? I mean, if you know what the premium was for the year, you could figure it out for one month.
Six thirty-five a day.
Six thirty-five a day. Okay, now let me ask you something. According to the budget, it says here you have.
Speak up, Marson.
Okay, according to the budget, it says it's four hundred thousand, you figure for, for the year 2018.
This is just the property policy.
That's just the policy.
Not liability umbrella, director's prime, workers' comp. This is just your biggest, largest expense on the, on the insurance law.
Okay, so you're saying two hundred and ninety thousand is for the buildings?
No, that's deductible. I was giving you deductible example. The buildings, all of the buildings were.
Five million dollars.
Okay, that's just, I was giving you a deductible explanation so you all could understand how much.
Premium, but let's, let's just discuss.
The premium for eighteen months is three forty-nine over twelve.
Annualized?
Annualized, it comes to, with the twenty-one thousand refund, comes to two eighteen. And you paid two fifty-three last year, so we saved almost thirty thousand dollars going long-term and with the refund.
So Alan, you're pretty much familiar with the, the other policies and what we paid last year. That would keep us approximately at four hundred, right? Once we get the other policies? Probably two or two-four hundred.
You're probably going to, I would say, be under that. I think your liability last year was seventy-two. And then, of course, you got workers' comp, that's expensive.
We may save, it may be coming lower than what we budgeted.
Okay, you have it budgeted for four hundred thousand, so you're saying it may be lower.
Right.
But we, we haven't seen the rest of the policies yet. That's approved in what, February? Your, your, the rest of your policies are Feb. 1. But, and then this, this property policy being your largest expense, we're going to do it now. Number one, we wanted, the good news is we're going to do it before the 2018 increases. They're coming. If 2018 has little or no activity, 2019 will soften, that's the thought. And you guys won't renew again until May 2019. So we hopefully will glide right over 2018 with any increases. Not possible, because we're already locked into the rate. And if 2019 is quiet or not terribly busy with hurricanes, we might see another decrease. We've, we've saved money every year I've been here.
Great, thanks, Alan. Anybody else? Okay, great job. Thanks, Alan. Applause for Alan, please. Okay. Now we need a motion to approve, as presented, the property insurance proposal from Ventis XL. Ventis XL, with all the features that Alan just described. Can we have a motion to approve? Louis moved it. And Marat seconded. Okay, any further discussion on the board? Any further from the audience? Any objection? Hearing none, it's approved. We did receive the correct minutes in the meantime. So I'll ask for a motion to approve as presented, thanks, Alan. The October 24th, 2017 regular meeting. And we have a motion? Marat made the motion. It's approved. There's a second. Louis seconds. Okay. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, it's approved. Next item is... Okay, is the hur, the impact window?
There is one company about to talk about shutters.
Oh, shutters, okay. Can you invite him in, Dan?
I would like to. Adam?
Yeah.
While, while she's escorting him in, at the last meeting, we discussed that this would be a huge expense for the association, way beyond anything that we have budgeted or could, unless we do a very large special assessment, which we're not planning to do. However, these companies are being invited in to, just to tell us, or to explain to us how individually we as owners could collectively, well, individually, collectively get a lower rate for us individually to put in the hurricane shutters, if that's, if that's an option, or the impact windows, if that's the option. And then, depending on how many people decide to go with that, then there would be a group rate discount for everybody that decides to utilize this company to put in their impact windows or shutters. So I'll ask the first presenter to introduce himself and this company. And I was just explaining to the, oh, to the members that what we're looking to do is not as an association do the blanket shutters or, or impact windows or whatever as an association as a whole, but to provide an opportunity for owners to group together and get benefit from a group rate discount if they individually want to put impact windows. What is your company, impact windows or shutters?
No, we're shutters.
Shutters, okay. If they individually want to put in shutters, then they, they could, let's say fifty people will get a lower rate than if they were to do it individually without the group rate. Can you discuss, first of all, give us your name, your company, and if that's something that can be provided?
Hello. Hello. My name is Alex, I'm the owner of ANX Builders.
You gotta hold it close.
Hello. All right, my name is Alex, I'm the owner of ANX Builders. I've been doing hurricane shutters for the past nineteen years. Since I was seventeen years old. Yes, you're absolutely right. When you do pick about fifty units, you're going to get a better discount than if you do get ten units or five units, just because he is the actual metal supplier, so that's where the metal comes from. And obviously, the more metal I can buy in bulk, the discount is greater. So that's something definitely to take consideration when you decide to make a decision on either shutters or windows. I'm sure it'll work the same with windows, so.
Can you discuss pricing for us?
What do you have to discuss with price? I mean, I gave you pricing for, like, a whole thing, and there's no way I can give you a price in individual units just because I don't have individual unit pricing. I think those are every single breakdown of each department, what it will cost. As far as percentage, you're, is that what you're trying to consider?
Tell us the type of shutters.
Yeah, explain, yeah, describe them.
Well, this is the thing. I was very short notice on this at the meeting. I didn't understand what the whole meeting was about, but the accordion shutters is mainly what we quarter on. It's a very simple shutter. You can close the inside of the unit or the outside on the first floor. It's not much more than that. I mean, I can bring you samples, and you can have it on the display here for you guys to see it and play with it.
Is it basically on the patio? Is it on regular windows?
Yeah, it goes on regular, oh, it's enclosed in your whole apartment. You're going to have the window shutters on the windows and your patio shutters. You can either have it against the sliding glass door, or you can have it against the screen doors on the screen patio, depending on what the condo will allow. If you do it on the patio, obviously, you can leave your furniture and everything out there. You don't have to bring everything inside in case of storm. If you do it against your sliding glass doors, then obviously you have to bring everything in.
Are they sliding shutters?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, they're, they go from left to right. So they can be locked in the, from the inside or the outside.
Like, from the inside?
It will, everything. Well, everything in the, in Broward County, it's considered high velocity hurricane zone, so it all has to meet the hundred and eighty mile an hour.
Sorry, and you said they're from the inside to the outside?
Well, you can close them, obviously, you're going to be able to close them from the inside. They're going to be installed on the outside of the window. Yeah, so you will have to open your window, and if you have screens, you actually have to take the screens out to be able to close them.
Dan, so maybe you could work with them and find out if they could provide a rate based on unit size, based on number of windows, what they would be able to provide? If there's fifty that sign up and that kind of thing? Because I think that would be much more useful and relevant to the people in the audience. You know, what they, what they would have to pay? If there's fifty, if there's a hundred, I don't know what the different plans or group rates are?
Well, I can actually break it down per unit, per apartment. Right now, I broke it down per building, the prices I gave you. So instead of doing it per building, I can actually do it per apartment. So if you live in a certain drop, they're all pretty much the same. Do you know if you live in a corner unit, what your cost will be for the accordion, if they were just one unit, or if it was fifty units? So I can break it down for you in that scenario.
Okay, we could maybe do like an average here, because on, like, for instance, you have the, you have the Bordeaux at two hundred and forty thousand, so seventy-five units. Divide that by seventy-five, it'll probably give you like an average.
Well, you can do average, but obviously, the corner units are going to be.
At least that way, we would have an idea of what I'm talking about. Dan, can you do that math for us? Two hundred and forty divided by seventy-five?
Got to calculate it.
Well, just do it on your phone.
I don't have a calculator.
Just do it on your phone.
He's going to do it. You know, two hundred and forty.
Three point two.
Okay. So about three thousand?
Right, but that's where I get to the point, like, the corner units, I know they're larger than the middle units. So if you live in the middle unit, you're obviously not going to pay as much as somebody that lives in a corner unit. If you're just doing it piece, bits and pieces, if you do it as a building, as a whole building doing it, then it's just average it out between everybody. But if you're just picking out five, fifty units, you don't really average it out.
So can you explain like the logistics from the perspective of an association? Would, would the association then have to enter into a contract with you to provide that group rate opportunity for, for our owners, or what would?
There is a bigger discount when you do the association contract versus individual contract. And the biggest discount comes down on the permit. Because if we enter contract with a building as a job, then we only need one permit for all the individual units, just one master permit. If we do fifty units individually, where I contract with an individual customer, then I have to do fifty individual permits.
So in other words, you're saying like if we contract with you as an association, and then you end up doing fifty for the group rate, we can still benefit from the association having one permit versus fifty permits?
Correct. The pricing of the permit will be dramatic. I mean, it will be very small compared to if you do individual. So let's say you do, yes, sir?
My understanding is that the association has no responsibility for individual windows or patios. It is the responsibility of each unit owner, and the association cannot enter into a group contract.
Well.
Dan, is that correct?
That is correct. We are responsible for the windows or anything.
Right. Right, the windows are, you, when you look at.
So what I would suggest you do is that you come up with a price per window and per patio. Because that's the only way, because there are one bedrooms, there are two bedrooms, and there are corner units, and there are efficiency units. And no patios, but you have the large window. So basically, that's the only way, if you're going to get a fair price, you can get a group of owners coming together and coming to you and say, we want X number of units done, but we need a price on individual windows.
Well, the thing with individual windows is you cannot really put a price on individual windows. I can do individual apartments. I can't really do individual windows. I mean, you, you'll have a breakdown on individual windows, what it will cost, but you'll have a whole apartment per se. So all the apartments are on the corner, will have this amount, and then each window will have a price, but it will be based on that whole apartment.
When the corner units have five, five windows. Two on the front, two on the side, plus the patio.
I understand that. Every layout is different on the, on the building. What I'm trying to say is I'll give you pricing on an individual basis as far as all the corner units' price will be this, per floor, each individual, which that's fine.
But the association cannot.
Well, the association can do a contract with the, to do fifty apartments. Even though they don't own the shutters, the owner owns the shutters, because I've done it before in other buildings. That's why, the only reason I'm done. We did in Boca Towers, and we did it in another unit, Boca Tonne. And we did, there's two hundred and fifty apartments, and we did fifty apartments at a time. And the first fifty apartment, I contracted with the association, so I can do a master permit where every single apartment that I did, it's under that permit, under the association. I didn't have to do fifty permits per se.
Who do you bill?
What do you mean, who do I bill?
The permit, the permit.
The permit.
No, I'm talking about the work. Who do you bill?
Well, that's the thing. I build the association. The association collects from the owner, and then they pay me.
Can't do that.
Well, I mean, it, there's no out, charge on it. It's just if we go that route, it will be less expensive when it comes to the building department, when it comes to billing permits. If I do individual permits, it's more expensive. It's the same outcome. You're going to end up paying less if you do it through the association than if you do it individually. That's all I'm getting to.
How much is that permit?
If you do individuals, you can be paying three hundred to four hundred dollars per unit. Versus if you do the whole thing. I'm sorry?
And if the permit is one permanent?
It's a percentage, it's about two percent or something like that, so it's a lot less. Because then you only need one engineering set of plans. You only need sign and seal engineering for one set of drawings, not fifty sets of drawings, and I have to pay an engineer fifty times to do the same thing. So that, that's one of the benefits of doing it that way. It's more of a hassle for the association, to be honest, because then they have to collect from everybody. And that's what I've found in the past, that it's a little bit more of a hassle for them. But it's the, more economical for the end user at the end. I don't know, I mean, most of the times, the association is now, does not want to do it that way. Or they're willing to, they'll, that's a way to save money there.
What's your billing procedure?
If we do it through the association, it's obviously a little different than if I do it on an individual basis. If we do it on an individual basis, it's a forty percent deposit, sixty percent, when the job's complete, a hundred percent, and you're happy and the permit's passed. If we do it through the association, it's a percentage on the job. So we do a twenty percent deposit, and then twenty percent with materials, and then twenty percent if we complete it. It's just, it's a little bit different contract than if we do it with the individual owner. Yeah.
Can you just, like you said, you were going to write up things and present it to us, you know, with an example of the shutters, some people in the market, and all of that information, stuff, you know, we're, like, in the dark a little bit.
Sure, I can definitely have a sample in here, if they give me some room. And I'll have a full-scale sample where you guys can stop by and operate it and see it. And then as far as the pricing, I'll get with Dan, and I'll email him individual unit pricing. And then I could probably come out with a percentage if we get fifty units or whatever. That way you don't, you don't have to do it so often with it.
Uh, one more thing, is, would there be an alternative uh, form of realizing those group savings if, if just the association was out of it?